This is City Council, uh, work meeting, City of Pleasantville. Today's date is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the time is six thirty P M. This meeting has been duly advertised by the city's newspaper and performs with the Open Public Media Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call?
Davenport.
Present.
Double arrow.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
All of them.
I attend motion to approve the previous minutes.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Um.
Let's have it. Okay, open office. Mayor?
Who wants to go first?
You doing right or you doing?
Yeah.
How you want us to be?
Can I stand right here next to you?
Sure. Doc, how do you want us?
How do you want us?
You can right there, but stay right there.
Okay. My way. There we go. There we go. It's this way, right?
Yep.
Okay. The oath of office for fire captain. Okay, you repeat after me. State of New Jersey, County of Atlanta. I.
I, Justin Hood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established in the United States.
And the.
Government.
Government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the off, office of.
Fire.
Fire captain.
For the city of Pleasantville.
The city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you guys for the opportunity. I very much appreciate it. Thank you guys for having faith in me and letting my family be a part of the next chapter of my life. Thank you.
Congratulations. Are you standing here?
Uh, yes. My wife Lauren Hood.
Hello.
My daughter Leah Hood. Say hi. My son Jackson Hood. And then my, uh, my, my father Dennis Hood.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Okay, this will be the oath of office for our fire chief. Repeat after me. State of New Jersey, County of Atlanta. I.
I, Scott Triton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of fire chief for the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This is my wife Rachel. You know, my mother-in-law Mary Jane Thomasell and my father-in-law, uh, Normfall Thomasell. Council, mayor, administration, the residents, thank you for this great opportunity. This is a, uh, you know, big, big responsibility and I'm going to do my best for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations, um, Justin and Scott. Um, stay dedicated and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and congratulations both of you on a job well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, chief and councilman. Have a pleasant one. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations for your service and I see firefighters do a great job in this country. I'm proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You know, I want to say thank you and appreciate you and good luck to both of you guys.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Chief, congratulations. You're called chief now, right?
Yes, sir.
And, um, Captain Hood, congratulations. I know you both did a great job, adventure a great job, I hope you continue on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have warned you.
Next is an agenda review.
Okay, person of the agenda. Resolution thirty-nine, authorize the tax assessment to file petition of appeals for appeals for the tax year twenty twenty-three.
Any questions?
Resolution forty, authorize the fiscal year twenty twenty-two local recreation improvement grant application funded by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs.
Any questions?
Resolution forty-one, authorize to establish a first generation urban enterprise zone checking account. Resolution forty-two, adopt the neighborhood preservation plan for submission by the city to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for year twenty twenty-four.
Questions?
Next is to view what the bill is.
Good evening. Obviously, we always have two bills left. The first one is the bills that were paid in vain. Last council meeting, actually, the council meeting in December, could be the new building in the first council meeting in January, and this council meeting. Most of the bills were paid, uh, utilities that had to be paid, we had to take care of them before we got a really approval. One of the things you'll see under current fund, you'll see a couple of lives in the bill, sixty thousand dollars. That was a reissue. They had lost the, the bill had been sent out prior in October and November. They've never arrived then, uh, so we canceled voided that check, put stuff in on it, and reissued it to them. Uh, most of the other ones were utilities. And then you'll see, um, page two, you will see our wire transfers for the month for a couple payrolls. You'll see the top one, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's the normal, uh, December transfer from a store utility into the current fund based on their budget, left of balance. The next one down, four twenty-six, has the medical coverage for active and retired employees for December. Uh, Pennville National Bank, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Part of that was money that we had borrowed from, I guess, the state when they advanced the money before COVID, that was unneeded, we had to pay that back. And then payroll, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Eighteen oh eight is a green acres, uh, payment we made for a loan. Eighteen thousand dollars is a, uh, part of our demo loan program from, I believe, two thousand and fifteen. And then payroll again of seven hundred thousand and the one forty-two is the transfer from the city into the tax retention account. As, uh, we were charged someone for, uh, when we had a tax sale, we had to refund that money.
Uh, one for Pennville National Bank, you said it was eight hundred and seventy-two, that was paid back for the COVID.
That would, the six hundred thousand that were paid back to COVID, the other just a refinance of a band.
I have a question, to piggyback off the, um, councilman. You said six hundred thousand was for COVID, but you said we didn't use it and you had to pay that?
In twenty twenty-one, when COVID was involved, we, um, put a, put a request in for the state to, to fund us, thinking we would need all that money because of shortness of, of revenue and, and other things. They approved it. Once it was approved and we received the money, our orders went through and realized we didn't need all that. So we've had it for last year, yielding it, but we had to pay it back. Based on, uh, part of the audit you'll see, we had to refund, I think, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that we received. Actually, we probably received like a million two. Uh, the six hundred thousand was, um, an overestimation, overestimate for me, thinking how much we would need. Uh, and after we went through the audit, we realized we, we didn't need all that money. Uh, we couldn't justify keeping it. So the order said we've got to return it at the, at the pay. I didn't want to do it, but.
That was only for COVID related items?
That was all COVID related items.
Thank you.
I'm trying to understand that, uh, you're still making taxes for me that you were just there all the needs for COVID, COVID in the sales, so you had to return it?
Yeah, we, when COVID started hitting, um, the state sent it out to everybody, um, what kind of money you would need to fund for the balance of the year. And we were looking at additional expenses, looking for loss of revenue, and we estimated higher than we actually needed. So we asked and we borrowed, they gave us one point two million dollars. Six hundred thousand would not need it. Uh, it was based on what we had estimated we wouldn't need, you know, it's definitely high, hopefully go, go get more money, which is what we did. And as a result, our order says we estimated way too high and we had to refund that to the state, uh, Department of, uh, the, uh, the Treasury. And that's what we did.
Let me just add.
Can I ask you another quick question? Was this put into our surplus or, you know, does this put us, so this drops our surplus?
Yes, well, I, I take it back. It was not included in the surplus.
Okay.
Because the order knew it had to go back. So it was just funny set aside into a, a reserve account that when it came due, we'd have to go ahead.
Chair, I can just ask, just for clarity, so when the Rets came down from the state, it was not clear as to specifics as to what you can use the COVID money for. So we put all of, most of what our, we, our anticipated revenue loss would be, and then they come out with the guidelines as to it can only be used with this, that, and the other. And so if you can only use it, like the mayor said, for those specific things, anything other than that, you have to return the money. So that's what we used to see.
On top of that, we also get money from FEMA to fund some of the COVID stuff, so that had to take into account. Since we got it one place, we can't get double dipped much if we'd like to. Uh, we got some from the feds and what we, what we didn't use from the state had to go back. Uh, the next is a list of bills to be paid for, uh, this time. Uh, mostly they're, are normal operating bills. Over a couple of them, uh, down on page one, Land and County Treasury, that is the, the fuel cost. As you know, the gas has been bouncing up and down, so we're pretty much, um, getting a better rate than we ever did with, with rigans or any other contractor. Uh, barco products. If they're not already seen on, on the main street, uh, there are the, the pretty little trash cans that we ordered to, uh, pay for by N P P program. They're, uh, they're circular, black, uh, will be up on Main Street for, hopefully for litter control.
How many?
Uh, we got fifteen of them.
So if you go down South Main Street, the, uh, most recent, uh, street improvement program where you see the newer trash cans, we tried to replicate that so that we'll have it going throughout the district. Um, and hopefully we'll carry that on to the old turnpike for that, uh, that improvement as well. So we're actually just trying to replace the, uh, all of the old trash, trash cans out in the street.
Is that a correct amount, like the twenty-two thousand?
Yeah. That included chipping and everything else. That's the, the total amount. On page two, you'll see it, top, uh, cam multiplied, we had a problem with a trash truck, uh, repaired the fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, the next one down is Orlando County Gift, first quarter payment, uh, one ninety-seven. This is really kind of a, not realistic number. Our total insurance is a million eight. We've had credit from last year, they give a dividend, and we take the credit during the first quarter. So it's really, our portion is over four hundred thousand dollars for the first quarter, but two hundred, two hundred and six thousand dollars taken out of credit, which we do normally. This is, uh, based on the dividend that the gift gives out.
Justin?
Did you say how much is the total?
The total, the whole insured bill is a million eight. And that will be shared also with the store utility. Uh, we're, we'll probably put two hundred thousand dollars in the store utility, the balance will be a million six, will come out of the current fund.
And you got a credit of?
We got a credit of two oh six that we take this year, we're going to take on the first quarter.
So, so what you're saying is that the next quarter is going to be more closer to four hundred thousand?
It'll be, yeah. It'll probably be a four fifty. A couple shared costs between current fund and the store utility. Our total cost can be like four hundred thousand a quarter. You'll see down halfway, covered down more blue cross, blue shield, it's the monthly cost for the down for active retirees. You go over to, to page two, I'm sorry, page three, you'll see, uh, some numbers from Flash, Dan, Flash and Daniel, they are for escrow. Payments going out to, for him work with, with the redevelopment of, uh, those ideal and other things. Keeper graphics, that's twenty-five hundred hours, you see the signs out along the street that say, uh, we, uh, staff for pedestrians, you'll see them around City Hall. People go against part of the money from, uh, N P P to make the area a little safer. You'll see, third from the fourth from the bottom, the Borough of Longport, we're going to share services with them for, um, software involved with the code enforcement.
Bloodline management.
For me?
Bloodline management.
Bloodline management, right. And the shared service of Longport is a three-year contract. Uh, if we didn't share, it would probably be five thousand a year, just six thousand dollars for three-year, three-year lease. The most dealing of our, uh, normal operating bills. If we skip over to page five, uh, halfway down to the Cape and Loaves, that's forty-six hundred hours, they order six months worth of oil for our vehicles, both the normal as well as the synthetic and. Do the oil for the tractors and the dump trucks and everything else. Second from the bottom, south here, the overhead door, um, that's for the front doors of the firehouse. We are replacing them one at a time, probably every two weeks, uh, at eight thousand dollars per person. Because they are old, they've been, been problems trials, we've had a lot of money, put money in repair, and decided to start replacing these things.
There's a question, I know about a year ago, we had talked about replacing over the top where all that stuff was rotting, do you guys take care of that yet, or is it still the same? I really haven't paid any attention, but I know we had talked about it.
Yes.
It's done?
Uh, we're doing, I don't know, I believe one of them is done. The other one will be done like every other week. We did this, um, economy, yeah, he said I can do them all in one week. He told a question more because they're going to have to have overtime for the guy as the weekend's closed. So we said, listen, do one now, do one in two weeks, so we're going to space it out.
Uh, excuse me, the fire doors you mentioned, are you just replacing the doors or you?
Replacing the whole door.
The structure of the frame?
Uh, I guess, door, I don't know if they're doing the framing or just the door itself, I believe. And then, uh, on page six, you'll see, uh, the training code instructions, there are third-party inspectors. This is for the month of November, December, uh, forty, fifty-four thousand dollars of an act, we collect the ninety-six thousand dollars for this inspection. So we are making a profit on this, uh, based on, um, what was approved in the whole program. We bumped the fees up and they get the state fee and we get administrative fee on top of that. Wendy Heinz.
I see that she's on here, but, um, can I ask, um, that is a visitor? Um, for Wendy Heinz, if we can look into this matter.
Where that from?
Six, six. Yes. Supervising, spouse, respect, but dependent? Yes. And what's the question? Well, I, I guess it's a, a contract or something, like a discussing? Well, is it pending, is it in negotiations, what exactly specifically is it? It's been resolved, but council has, you're going to see this name on the bill because of the conclusion of the issue. But council wants to ask a question on this, so outside of this formal report, who explains what that is and then who supervises it for them?
Through you, council president, is your question related to the payment today, or is your question just?
Well, payment ongoing.
Then that is something that we should probably discuss in executive session, which in fact is, I don't know, because I've not been privileged to that document, whether or not it's something that, not with standard being concluded, whether or not it could be real or not, I don't have insight into it.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
That's all. Next is, uh, chair. Next is public portion, anyone from the public, any questions, speaking on agenda items and agenda items only, please come forward.
Hi. I don't really want to speak on that kind of thing. I, I don't really want to speak on anything on this page right now. So, um, can I speak on that?
Just agenda items and agenda items only, until, until, uh, you get to regular meeting.
Oh, I can do it.
Anyone else from the public? Say anyone? I can, most of the public portion.
Long share.
Second, all in favor? Now we have open for, open discussion, council. Council one, uh, please.
Nothing at this time. I have nothing.
I say a motion for a court session.
Motion.
All in favor? Just go right ahead. Good evening again, this is the city of Pleasantville, city council regular meeting. Today's date is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the time is, uh, six fifty-five P M. This meeting has been duly advertised by the city's newspaper and performs with the Open Public Media Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Uh, roll call. A note, excuse me if you, uh, please stand for application and flag. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy hand be gone, that will be done, honored as it is in heaven. Give us a day, day and bread, give us a trespass, give us a trespassing, yes. Please stand to fix the position of the decision, as we think in power, according to that. Pledge a basis to the flag of the United States of America, and to the body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being, just as with all. So, um, between our last meeting, um, that we had, we had one of our, our mothers of our community, um, to pass, uh, Ms. Graves, God bless her and her family. It was crazy, as you know, I was a, uh, business owner and also a school board member, and she was the first black woman to own a business. Doris, House of, yeah?
House of Beauty.
House of Beauty, yeah, I didn't have to go. But, um, a beautiful lady, a beautiful warm home celebration, uh, well-earned, well-enserved. She was, she was a shining black queen in this, in this community, and until we have a moment of silence for her. Ms. Graves, God bless Ms. Graves' family.
Roll call.
Uh, roll call?
Davenport.
Present.
Double arrow.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
All of them.
And I take a motion to dismiss the reading of previous minutes.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Let's have it. Okay. Any more, uh, nominations, proclamations, mayor?
No, nothing, thank you.
All right, uh, madam clerk.
Okay, person of agenda, resolution thirty-nine, authorizing tax assessment to file petition of appeal, appeals for the tax year twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Okay.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Double arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay. Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution two forty, authorize the fiscal year twenty twenty-two local recreation improvement grant application funded by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Double arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution forty-one, authorize to establish a first generation urban enterprise zone checking account.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Double arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution forty-two, adopting the neighborhood preservation plan for submission by the city to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for year twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Davenport.
Yes.
Double arrow.
Yes.
Yes. Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Need a motion to approve the bill list?
Motion.
Next.
Is that second? Is that second, Kamona? Roll call Davenport.
Yes.
Double arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes, on everything but six, 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 six.
Can you give me the heading there, please? Is it done? All right, all right, yes, for the record, so noted. Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is the announcement of the twenty twenty-three city council committees.
Okay.
Present. Motion. This is an, I'm sorry, you wanna call out the committees or?
Yes. Okay, community relations, chairman, councilman Carrera, council, councilwoman Thomas, councilman Kamona. Finance, myself as chair, councilman Davenport, and councilman Val, planning development. Chair, council, councilwoman Thomas, myself, and councilman Carrera. Public safety committee, councilman Kamona as chair, councilman Davenport, and myself again. Public service committee, this is councilwoman Val Valarao as chair, councilman Barclay, and councilman Carrera. Recreation, councilman Barclay as chair, councilman Kamona, and councilwoman Thomas. Stormwater, wastewater. Councilman Davenport as chair, and councilman, councilwoman Val Valarao, and councilman Barclay. And the citizens advisory board, and board. Those are the least for twenty twenty-three.
A public portion.
Next is public portion, anyone from the public portion to come forward, please go forward, add your name and concern.
Thank you, council persons, for giving me this opportunity. This is Jose David Alcantara, resident of Pleasantville, been a resident for a long time. It's five comments, some of them are questions, so let me say them all instead of stopping for reach. One, please, speak louder and more clear, everyone. Because many times I don't know what's being said, and, you know, so that could, maybe you missed something important, and not, not the fact that I have a slight hearing loss anyway. So speak louder and clear, please. The old high school area, is a portion of it for sale or not? And what part is for sale? And if you do decide to put it for sale, that's prime choice real estate. Go, don't undersell Pleasantville, go for big-time money. You, we can, you know, make money that way. Next comment. I wanna thank the new citizen listener from her reputation. She's highly experienced, highly qualified, especially in city matters, trustworthy, dependable, smart, honest, and strong, great reputation for Sir Elizabeth Cosby, um, clinic here.
I didn't ask him to do that.
I love her, a great reputation, she knows her stuff. She will tell you she agrees, but that's, she will tell you she disagrees, but that's not personal. Because she's gotta tell it like it is, and that's good for the city. You can't be yes, 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 all the time. Next little comment, pothole. Delilah and Route Nine, right there, Marco Polo, everybody's going around it. A year or two ago, I got a flat tire there. I went to the side to the sidewalk, my little car hit, got a flat tire. So maybe it's creating a problem, maybe it's already been addressed, pothole. Uh, so it, it just gotta watch, it happens all the time, and, and it's crazy. So, um, that's it, thank you so much.
Anyone else from public?
On the way. That, that, that's harm, three hundred South Chestnut Avenue. I rise to thank you, Mr. President, for really, uh, to say that our community lost a very, very person who served thirty-three years when they were voted in case they serve well. Truthfully, I still can't believe that she's gone. Talking to her just the day before, and really miss, thank you. Mr. Barclay, welcome to the team of city council. I, I am proud of you. I have to ask because I know what you guys go through, okay? But welcome to the podium. Uh, Mr. President, you did mention the chairman of street paving, who's committed, is that? In the hell, I just wanna commend you and those and the grant. They are doing a magnificent job in our city. And the boulevard has become a twin street, and it's something to see. And then I turn and look, Decatur Avenue, it's gonna be fading from one end to the other. And you guys know in front of that old high school on Decatur Avenue, that road was bumpy. And I'm just a proud candidate. I wanna commend all of you, really, for things happening in our community. When the nation is trying to survive, you know, the Dallas Depression, and here in Pleasantville, coming to you, the mayor, the mayor gets the grant, but things are happening in Pleasantville. Developments, Black Rose Pike and Route Nine, the old trailer park. My good mayor, Sister Peyton, I was trying to find out today, what is gonna come when it pop?
Car wash.
The old, uh, Decatur Ave, I mean, yes, the end of Decatur Avenue, but the Black Rose Pike and Route Nine.
Uh, near, right, right, a car wash.
Okay, it's gonna be a car wash.
Yes.
But it's just good to see the, of the regulation, and to all of you, I wish you a good prosperous and successful twenty-three, and we'll be watching you, and, uh, good job, you know, take care of those numbers, I thank you, guys, and best of everything.
Hi. The next one, one twenty-six Avenue, Avenue. I just have a few things that I want, um, to ask, and maybe you can answer them now or not. The other day I was sitting in my car, um, painting my route, you know how you go to run your arrows? And I'm gonna go, because I just wanna dig that. And I'm sitting in my car, and I looked up and I seen a rat crossing the street. So, um, I'm still not right after that. I'm bringing that to your attention because I've been asking about maybe coming up with some kind of ordinance or something that people have to use the property, uh, trash receptibles. Uh, Pleasantville has like the worst trash situation in, um, in terms of picking up trash because look, a lot of that stuff is not in proper trash receptibles. There's, there are dresser drawers, bags, trash cans with no bottoms. Um, and if these things are sitting around and garbage is sitting around like that all week, from one trash day to the next, it's growing rootless. And I, I've lived on that corner for forty-eight years, I've never seen a rat. Um, so that, that, that's two of those right there. Um, has anybody done anything about the commercial vehicles parking on the streets overnight? And the trailers parked on, like, I guess it's landscaping, trailers parked on the corners of the streets? Because sometimes I'm going to work, I can't even get around them. I'm going this way, and I can't even go, the trailer's parked right here. You know, other people coming in, and they have to turn extra wide, they go around it. It's really, um, it's a nuisance.
What, what street are you talking about?
I'm talking about North First Street and Woodland.
First and Woodland?
Yes.
All right.
Renee, we'll look into that, that's been like an ongoing thing, as far as us issuing summonses and things like that. We've been doing it, we've been out there doing it, people have just been ignoring it, to be honest with you.
And also on First and Adams, the other side. Like I said, I'm going this corner, First and Adams, over here, North First over here. But First and Adams, like the street that leads to this, there's right there on that corner. It was an accident, um, I wanna say a week ago, or week and a half ago, and the guy parked his, his commercial vehicle in, in, on, on the street, in front of the house, and then another person came, and the people that have the parking, that live on this side, a car was coming through, and he just squeezed through there and knocked a man's fender off and his rear mirror, and he kept going. I heard it, by the time I got to the, to the door, they were gone, but that's what happened.
I, I will make sure that those two areas are looked into, and for anybody else that's out here that had that same problem in town, please let us know so we can address this in real time. You know, we'll send somebody out there as soon as you call. I mean, this is an ongoing problem, we know that there's trailers all over the place, particularly landscape trailers. And what we normally do is we, we put a sticker on them, orange stickers that I'm sure that you guys have seen, and that allows them, that gives them twenty-four hours to move the vehicle. And sometimes what they do is they pull the sticker off and move the car, and then they go right back and do it again. So this is like an ongoing thing with these trailers and tractor trailers, but we have been out there issuing tickets. But real time, if you, when you see something like that, feel free to call so we can go out there and address it right then.
I'll be driving, I can't talk, so I'm telling you now, it's there every day.
Okay.
So if you give them one warning, how many warnings you gonna give them before you just take the truck?
That's a process that we have to go through.
You can't, you can't.
We just can't just go and just tow cars.
Right, but I'm just saying, how many warnings do they give before you actually?
That process runs over again.
Council president.
Once it's been moved, it starts over again. I know it's, I know it's a pain, but.
I understand.
But we are, we are doing our best, but I will look into those two areas.
Thank you. Um, the last, my last thing I wanted to address was the sewer. Um, not the sewer, but the paving of the streets, and, and it's the sewer because you can't pave the streets until you fix the sewer on it. So I'm really, I got that down pat now. But what I wanted to know is, it, it seems to me that a lot of that work is being done on the south side. When are you gonna bring some of that work to the north side? Yes.
Well, I just want you to know, me and Miss Peyton have already addressed that because I have a concern with that also, that everything is being done on one side of town. So hopefully the next project is on the north side, we should think, so.
Okay, that's.
It's been addressed.
Okay. And that's just explaining a little bit more, the, um, the current street improvement plan has expired as of twenty twenty-two. And the way the plan was set up, all the streets were graded, you know, from the worst to the, you know, least worst street. And we would try to do a street on the north side, the south side, and then the center of town. That was kind of the schedule, but then we ran into the infrastructure issues, and we got off schedule because the infrastructure wasn't allowing us to keep to that schedule. So as councilman Davenport stated moving forward, we're coming up, our engineers have currently been tasked to work with a, to work on a citywide plan where they're gonna grade all those streets again, and prioritize them based on the condition, actually seeing what the infrastructure is first. So we've learned from our mistakes from the last time, and then as you schedule the projects out, it'll be, make sure that we hit area, every area of town each time we do a project.
That would be great because, um, I was, that would really be great because the north side has some really terrible streets.
Yeah, so that, that is the plan, and then if I may, chair, and I'm not sure if councilman Korea would like to comment, because I know you've been talking about, um, the issues with trash and things like that, and he's met with myself, we've met with DPW. They have just come up with, um, a door knockers and stickers, um, they're both in English and Spanish. Um, and we're gonna do a citywide sweep on trash collection days or non-days if anyone sees trash status out before the appropriate, uh, trash put-out time. And those places, they're gonna get stickers notifying them of what the, uh, the schedule is, notifying them of how we get the proper trash receptibles. And if, if they become problem areas, then we'll go address it accordingly. But we're gonna do an aggressive, uh, campaign throughout the town, making sure that, because particularly what we've learned, Renee and others, is that a lot of newcomers come into the community, and they might not be aware of what, what the protocols and the schedules are. So, um, we got the information made up, um, and this year that's gonna be a priority for DPW to get it out there.
Okay, because I'm really getting nervous, because they got chickens, and chickens bring snakes, and that's not how I wanna live. So ghosts on one, ghosts on the other side of town, just like.
I wanted to let you know that after the meeting last week, I did address that with chief, and he, that was, this is to get to you, but I didn't have the phone for you or Linda.
Oh, okay.
You know, because of the town. But yes, that's what he said, you have to call right away.
All right, I can, I, I can only do the best I gotta, I leave and I'm going all day. And when I come back, maybe, um, the city inspector's gonna go out, see what all that junk is in these people's yards. And, you know, you got a bunch of old cars that's never moving and all that kind of stuff, that gives the roadless a place to hide. Gotta do something.
Okay, um, Mr. Archie, you can put off this list.
I'll let Lady Hope first.
Okay. I would've done that too.
We can only hope.
Hold this car.
I was just saying, so I just had a few questions that I don't think I, I've received an answer for when you voted. So resolution forty, just wanted to know how much was the improvement grant that we received?
It's up to a hundred thousand dollars, if I may, chair, as your grant has not been received. This is the support resolution to apply for the grant.
Okay. So hundred thousand is not that much, so how are you planning, chair, how are you planning to allocate those funds? Is there a, a list based on how poor, poorly the recreation facility is?
We've been having this for a while.
Okay, okay, all right. Then the next thing I wanted to find out, um, the U E Z zone for authorizing the check, I know the check, checking account. I know we had U E Z previously, so this is reestablished, is it?
We share, yes.
Okay, all right, because I know we had U E Z before. Okay. And then for the neighbor, neighborhood preservation plan, what exactly does this entail? I wasn't quite sure.
Neighborhood preservation?
Yes, that's what it is reported to.
As far as community, that's, um, the plan, you have to actually go out and do various projects.
Is there, elaborate a little?
I'm sorry. The chair has asked me to, um, explain, so the, your M V P is a neighborhood preservation program, is a five-year grant that was awarded to the city of Pleasantville, that's one of our designations, that has been a successful plan within Pleasantville for the last fifteen years or so. Uh, you identify certain sections of the community where you want to do either housing improvement or neighborhood improvement. This is a specific, uh, grant, this five-year grant is specifically for your downtown area. This is where you see your art murals, this is where you see your city plot, this is where you see the flowers and the flower plant. So this is to beautify and to improve your downtown area. So this, uh, the five-year plan has been approved, but this resolution here is to additionally approve this, this calendar year's work, uh, work, uh, beautification work.
Okay, great. And my last question was, I just wanted to make sure that I heard the CFO correct. When he talked about the fifteen trash cans, they were costing twenty-three dollars, twenty-three thousand dollars, is that correct?
They are heavy-duty fuel.
And, and, did we get an R F P for that?
We did have to get one, um, and the CFO worked on this. Um, we'll look into it to see if there's other items, because this is part of your neighborhood preservation money, so sometimes there's other items included, so we'll look. So sometimes there's other items included, so we'll look.
Okay, alright. And I also want to say welcome to Ms. Council, to believe that she is here as well as Mr. Barrow. Please welcome, Council.
Hi, I'm Lindsey Shaw, Bridgertown Canopy, 532 West Leeds. So, um, first I just wanted to say I appreciate all the continued sport, support from council uh, to our industry and specifically our company, greatly appreciated. Uh, we've been working very hard on moving through the process, both with the state and local processes. Um, on October 26th, the state, Bridgertown was given final approval from the state. Uh, so we converted from a conditional to an annual license, which is really fantastic and very exciting. Um, but since then, we've been stalled, um, at the planning commission. And it's been a very slow and frustrating at times process. Um, I understand that as one of the first applicants, you know, end business in Pleasantville, we gotta work through the kinks. Um, and I take on that responsibility wholeheartedly. Uh, why I'm here today though, is to speak towards the process. Um, I believe we have an opportunity to make the post-town board approval process smoother. Uh, especially when a business is located within a cannabis overlay zone, uh, so properly zoned. I ask you all here today to possibly set aside some time in the future to review and audit the process. Because, you know, for applicants like myself who are state-approved, self-funding the project, um, I think we can have a better chance for these applicants to be successful. Uh, I feel very fortunate to have, you know, experience in the cannabis industry and I'm able to navigate the process maybe a little bit easier than most. Um, but I know that with future applicants, they're not gonna be as lucky. And I know, I don't want them to crumble in the process because they don't know what to do or they don't have the grit to, to last through this complicated process. Um, so just to conclude, I would be happy to provide any experience, uh, post all of this and provide feedback on how the process can be most streamlined. But I just wanted to kind of bring this all to your attention and let you know, um, you know, what's going on. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, excuse us.
Yes.
What's your first name again?
Lindsey Shaw.
Lindsey Shaw, Ms. Shaw, what is the reason that they gave you for the delay?
Um, I have not gotten a specific reason. Uh, I stop in periodically. Today, I actually stopped in and talked to, uh, Mr. Kevin Kane. I asked him, hey, I know you guys are in violation of my 45-day review time period. And, um, the response was, well, we have 120 days to get back to you. And talking with my planning attorney, they told me, no, that's for a major subdivision, uh, approval. So I'm not really sure what the process is. My application went initially in in October. And we got, uh, review back and submitted what needed to be done. We're going for a variance because nothing is being done to the building. There's no changes on the site, so we're trying to go for a variance to site plan. Um, I thought we could get on in the February meeting, but it doesn't sound like that.
I was, okay, well, Miss Payton says she's gonna explain it, but I would like to, hopefully we could get a meeting with Mr. Kane so that we can find out why he would make a statement like that. Because this is not the only project that's been held up.
Ms. Payton, can I?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Shaw, just for clarity's sake, you're talking about the city planning board, right? Not state, not county, the city. Okay, thank you.
So, um, thank you for bringing that to full council's attention. Just Friday, was it Friday of last week? The city's planning and development need, uh, committee met.
Reorg, reorganization meeting?
No, no, the city's planning and development committee, which consists of three, um, of our council people. This very matter was brought to our attention at that meeting. So there's a, uh, a tentative meeting scheduled for next week, uh, with Mr. Kane and the planners and the engineers to discuss how we can navigate through this issue, not just for you, but moving forward, okay?
Well, I appreciate for giving me some update. It's, um, it's just been crooked, so any information is good information. So I appreciate everyone's hard work and, you know, trying to help us.
Please stay off the meeting exchange forum or something.
Yeah, I actually have Linda's on our presentation. She's been great, by the way.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Archie.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dale Archie for President.
I wouldn't let it jump in front of you.
Question number one. When the legislation, legislative passed laws in 2007 and 2010 designed to save taxpayers' money by limiting sick leave cashouts for local public programs. Question, uh, Linda, I guess I have to ask you that question. Is that something that's going on with Pleasantville that the sick leave, uh, cashouts, um, for Pleasantville? Has that been limited or are we, Pleasantville's still doing that? Meaning that sick time, you can cash it in?
I understand the question. I'm trying to make sure and I'm going to defer me to council. No, just for, so what, the sick leave that you're referring to is considered, yeah, there's a cap.
Retired.
Um, there's a cap. And the way that that sick leave payout was writ, written in our CBAs, our collective bargaining agreements, it was entitled terminal leave. Pleasantville and probably, huh, based on the audit, 40 other municipalities were not applying the state rule, uh, based on CBAs because we believe, based on, um, advice from attorneys, that the, uh, CBAs that were in place and we had to comply with the CBAs. We have recently learned, uh, that those, that language within the CBAs have to be modified. And to date, a modification is being made. Um, I don't believe that this is the appropriate forum to really discuss what those modifications will be, but we are aware and we are working with our labor attorneys to make sure that the City of Pleasantville will be in compliance.
So make sure I understand you, the, you know, that just points your attention. If an employee, if an employee has 100 sick, sick days and the law says you can only use 50, are you saying according to contract as of right now, that employee can use 100 sick days when we please?
No.
You're not saying that? Okay.
No, that's not.
Okay, okay. But now the contractual language doesn't supersede state language, am I right?
It does not.
Okay. Next question. Okay, next question I have, um. We're going into it since we're in the new year and we go on budget. I, I hope that the, um, committee that deals with budgeting, the budgets for this coming year, I hope they start the budget process, uh, as they pay because it's a tedious, um, thing to go through and I hope that's something that gets done early and not later. Um, next question, I, I, I'm gonna throw it out there, anybody wanna ask an answer? Um, we know for our fire, police department, they take much of the budget, right? Um, so the question I have is, would the City of Pleasantville be interested in, um, promotional frees? You wanna answer it?
We can, we're, uh, open to do a lot of things, but we can't discuss, discuss.
Okay, okay. I'm just wanting to record this. Okay, okay. Um, next thing, um, Mayor or Linda, you can answer this question. Cars, trucks, tools, clothes, uh, uniforms, who owns, owns those items? Within the city. Who owns all those items in the city?
What'd you say, the cars?
Cars, trucks, tools, hammers, screwdrivers, you name it. Who owns all those tools? You see? All right, what I'm getting at is that, I know it sounds funny and trivial, but I understand the question. It's the taxpayers that own it. So since the taxpayers own these things, I'm saying as the taxpayers, I don't want my dollars being, my, my, um, dollars being used for city vehicles taken outside of Pleasantville unless you are the fire chief or police chief. Any other employees taking, um, city-owned vehicles home? I'm asking that that stop and that cease because I think you have a, um, ordinance on that in reference to, um, I think under the ethics code, I think you did. That these things shouldn't be done as far as favoritism because if one does, then someone else can do it. Because if you're not the police chief, if you're not the fire chief, and you're just another employee, um, you know, disrespecting anyone else, that means it shouldn't be allowed. Next question. Now does somebody wanna answer it?
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Archie.
My two minutes not up yet. Because we're just going curse, we're going back and forth. You let other people talk, go off. Um, I have all friends. Next question I have, um. Uh, I guess I gotta cheat you. How many lieutenants do we have? Don't cheat to the chair, I'm sorry.
Chair, chair.
How many police, um, lieutenants do we have?
Um, enough cover shifts, we'll take care of it.
How many is that? 20, 30, 80? You're not sure? Can we ask the police chief?
Uh, I wouldn't ask that, I wouldn't ask that question.
You can answer that question, interesting. Okay, um.
Thank you.
Next, next question will be then. Since you wanna answer that one. Um, if, if all these individuals on day shift, wouldn't it be more feasible for them to be on different shifts?
No, no. Okay, sir. I think that your questions are valid. I would instruct that they not be answered right now. I think that they need to be taken into consideration. Because you're asking things that do delve into potential collective bargaining as well as the structure of the city, which would be a hypothetical and for them to be able to answer it right now, you perhaps could then say later on, well, they answered this question in the affirmative or the negative and say that they've now gone back on their word. So I think that what you're saying is valid, but I would ask the chairperson.
Yeah, I was just asking a question like how many, that's all. I, I never got a number. So that's not contractual or anything else, it wasn't.
This, I, you asked, what would be more feasible, sir? Um, Mr. Chair, through you, if you'd like to have the police chief answer the question, but it's certainly up to you if he knows off the top of his head. If he doesn't, then you shouldn't speculate.
I won't answer.
Okay.
Next question, I guess, uh, because I asked about the free, uh, free, uh, promotional frees. On Amazon? All the people talking on that end. I was definitely be kidding me.
I know.
Y'all guys be kidding me. And also, uh, Mr. Chair, you, you put things in order. This is the second time we had a meeting and you did the same thing. And that first one was, he was giving us two minutes, we had three minutes, when you guys made the rules as far as how many was going to speak and also to sign a sheet. So you kind of nego, uh, neglecting it, but if you went away from it, that's fine. If you want to go past it, I don't care, that's fine. I'm all right with that. Um, congratulations to, um, Barclay and to the young lady here that's our new attorney. Um, but you guys will be hearing from me because we got issues. And it's a new year, it's time to tighten budget. Taxpayers, I can't afford it, man. Not, not you wanna say, ma'am, I'll talk to you, Chair, directly, I'm not talking to none of you guys, but I'm saying collectively.
Thank you for hearing.
Taxpayers, we can't afford it.
Thank you for hearing.
We gotta do something. We gotta do something. We gotta cut it back. Fire, police, I don't care what it is, you gotta cut it, so much. If you're taking from us, you're killing us.
Good evening. This is Rome Page, 213 West Pleasant Avenue. I apologize, I did not know, I'll say something about you. I did not know that I had to sign in. I would say on your agenda, just put it there. So when I read it, I'll come up and sign it. I didn't know I had to sign it. Please apologize, I apologize for that. How was your class, what are you doing?
I'm fine, I'm still here, I'm glad to see you as well.
I'm still into it. Very, very strong young lady. And your files are even bigger.
Thank you so much.
Um, I just want to add something that, um, now that I'm a retiree on the Board of Education, uh, I'm still gonna participate with the Board of Education, I'm gonna become a volunteer and I'm gonna get involved. Uh, now I have some time to come to the council meetings. And I want to congratulate everyone for being sworn in, the new ones here. But there's something I'm gonna bring up every time I come. It's time to advertise Pleasantville. I work for New Jersey Transit, yes, I drive a bus. And I make sure that my picks are always local. So I'm always with Pleasantville. You have a Pleasantville bus terminal. It needs a lot, it needs a lot of help. I know you improved it, you did a lot of work in it, but I can't even use the restroom because it's either closed or the building's closed. Um, I, I want to let you know that there is some time where if you get a hold of New Jersey Transit, they will come in, you can use that space there as a ticket booth or machine. I drop off so many people at Pleasantville Bus Terminal. They're leaving, they're coming, and you can play a role, the city, uh, putting a machine in there and they buy the tickets, they do everything. And when that happens, they have to have the police from New Jersey Transit Police to go in and be a part of policing. So definitely help your situation as a, as a chief. Uh, one thing, Pleasantville is a goal line. You have a, at the Pleasantville Bus Terminal, to, 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 you have advertisement machines. I believe three. And it's electric and you can light it up. The last advertising you have in there is about the, um, uh, the sensor, senses. You have some good stuff here today that you're passing. A lot of that could go on advertisement. Let the people know what's going on in Pleasantville. Because we hear too much of the bad stuff. And listen, I'm your friend, I'm not your enemy. I'm not here to start any problems. I'm gonna help. I'm gonna help.
Thank you.
Um, is that a problem?
No, I said, why would you think that?
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, go on. Um, advertisement, now Pleasantville Board Education, we put everything in place. We're ready to advertise in those booths. And it costs some money. Take it from us. Take it from the board. Use it. It's a lot, huh? It's a pretty good amount. Now, mine is said it's based on four seasons. Yes, sir. How much time am I at? Our best, okay, Brooklyn. Okay. Congratulations. Happy New Year. I'm coming back. I'm gonna help. And I'm not gonna hurt you.
Good evening, Board. David Carrington, one of two East Adams Avenue, Pleasantville. I would like to take this time to commend you on a job well done on the work that you did on Franklin Boulevard. Um, well overdue. Um, we, uh, really appreciate that work. Um, the speed limit on, uh, Franklin Boulevard is 25 miles an hour. Because you did such a great job in, uh, uh, in paving and improving the, uh, improving, uh, Franklin Boulevard. The speed limit now is on the average of 50 miles an hour. I'm asking, requesting if sometime in the very near future, like yesterday, if we can look into stoplights and/or speed bumps. Um, since I've been on, in that area, I have witnessed, um, several accidents. And my wife was involved in one of them because of the, um, because of the speed. You have cars that are, um, passing, uh, other cars when the driver feels as though those, that, that, uh, drive, the other driver is moving too slow. And, uh, we're gonna have an issue on Franklin Boulevard if, uh, nothing is done. Because of the great work that you did, now we're looking into another problem. The other thing is, um, Leeds Avenue, Woodland Avenue, Edgewater, Third Street in Pleasantville. I'm asking that if you can look into, um, a police presence during the, uh, dismissal, at dismissal times for the, uh, for the children, um, as well as, um, the arrival times. Um, Leeds Avenue, Woodland Avenue, I'm not sure about Edgewater, it's partially one-way. But we have vehicles driving in the opposite direction, okay? If we can get a police presence out there in the morning and in the afternoon, it would be greatly appreciated. Um, I'm not saying we have to cover a two-hour shift or anything like that, but if your presence is felt, um, maybe those drivers would obey the, uh, the one-way signs. And the parking as well, uh, on Linden Avenue at times, we have, uh, parents that are parked in three lanes. Buses can't get through, the other parents can't get through.
Buses can't get through, the other parents can't get through, and it's a hectic situation. And if nothing is done, we may be unfortunately going to get up in the morning, reading the newspaper where a child or a parent was hit. The other thing is, what's going on with that? We have a lot of road rage. I don't know about Woodland Avenue, I don't know about Edgewater, but I do know about Leeds Avenue. There's a lot of road rage. And just the mere fact of having a police presence on these streets would curtail a lot of activity. All right? Thank you very much, and congratulations to Barclay and Ms. Cosby on your appointed positions. Thank you.
Chief, I know you work with the school.
Sure. Mr. Carrington, I know we had talked about, you wanna commit, the chair?
Yes.
I know we had talked about the issues at the school. And that was brought to me not too long ago about the, it was actually brought to me as a sign in an officer at each one of those locations, which I would not be able to do. But police presence, I will do my best. Because I can say this, we also have a problem with crossing bars, so most of our crossing bars, we know you're healthy. So, you know, when they don't show up, I have to have a cop there because what's most important is, is having a cop there crossing these kids. But at those locations that you're talking about, we do know that there's a traffic issue at those locations. We have reached out to the school for some help, you know, I believe that an engineer needs to be brought in for the traffic pattern. Because I went out there and I spoke to a bunch of parents at each of those locations who are angry because there's no traffic pattern, they're coming here, they're dropping their kids off for school, and they have nowhere to park. They don't have nowhere to park, they don't have nowhere to drop their kids off, and I think everyone here will agree with me, if you have a young child, you're not gonna have your young child get out of the car, block away from the school, and walk to the school. So they're parking in the streets. And we understand that, we know that they're breaking the law, and we do get out there and we have to move on. But there's a bigger problem here. There needs to be some type of traffic plan, you know, developed so parents can come and drop their kids off, you know, and continue on. So yes, we will get out there and do our best in those locations. I know the ones that you're talking about, I hear about it often.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
We had.
Mr. Carrington, you can talk to him afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. David Calaway, you're talking about Pleasantville. I heard Mr. Louie talking about this COVID money. It was one point two million we had. And it hurts me that we had to give six hundred thousand back. As much money that's needed here in Pleasantville? Who was in charge of spending? And is it possible we can get a list of the stipulations of how this money was supposed to be spent? Because I mean, six hundred thousand dollars, you even had your hand, and you give half of it back? Something's wrong. I know we could have found all kinds of ways to spend six hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know who was in charge of making sure that the money was spent the way it was, but we need, see, we can get that money back. I mean, it's not funny.
It's not.
I missed the administrator, she explained that there was a lot of guidelines to it.
I understand, I would like to have those guidelines, because I go as ways around spending that money. You don't never get back, never. The other thing I wanted to touch on is what Mr. Carrington was talking about was Franklin Avenue and these speeding right now, you don't need speed bumps, you don't need lights, all you need is a police officer out there with radar. Once people know, you'll be taking it out there, this speeding, believe me. They will slow it down. And also, that's revenue for the city. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? entertain a motion to.
Good evening, City Council. I just wanted to congratulate Councilman Barclay for joining this wonderful profession and I look forward to working with you throughout the year. So congratulations, Councilman Barclay. Council President, I just wanted to see if we can get an update on the trash transfer station in Pleasantville. I believe the address is eleven Devens Lane. I don't understand what's going on with that.
There is no action, to my understanding, that has come before for City Council. The last update that we had that it was scheduled to go before planning, the planning board, the city's planning board. Yeah. And I'm not sure, you know, if this, you know, I don't know if the application has been made yet because that's a planning board, that's a separate entity. So there's no action from the council, it's all in there.
Okay.
It has been on the planning board agenda, by January, February.
And where could I find out if it's going to be on the agenda? Would it be on the city website?
It should be, yes.
Okay. And where would be the best place to find out? I know there were financial reasons for agreeing to the trash transfer site in Pleasantville. But where would be the best place to find out how much that site has brought into the city since it was voted on?
Excuse me, say that again?
Where would be the best place to find out how much the city has made off, made from that sale of eleven Devens Lane since it was voted on by City Council? Has it brought in any money to the city or is it just, you know, where would we find those exact numbers?
So if you, let me, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, if you're speaking about the taxes that has been brought in or any revenue source from the existing business.
Exactly.
Yeah, that information is public information, I believe, and you could certainly open that.
And now we just go through?
The city clerk's office.
Totally. All right, thank you. Thank you, City Council.
Anyone else from the public?
Motion.
Congressman Mayor, Council. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I, again, I wish everyone a Happy New Year and send my condolences out to the Gray family. I also wanna congratulate Chief Tricaw and Captain Hood. To Mr. Carrington, I did take everything that you said back to the chief, so you got the answer firsthand, you got the answer firsthand now. But that's what I was gonna tell him about, you know, especially about the speeding. Because the traffic light, I don't know how that could ever happen, you know, on Franklin Boulevard. And, who else was it?
Police presence.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we discussed that, and you know, that's what he said about, you got the same answers. But I wanted to let you know that you're, you know, the meeting meant something and, you know, the questions were answered. And I think that's about it. Oh, as far as the bathrooms, Mr. Page, that's, you know, that's good to know that, you know, they would give us police presence if that's true. We have, only by having a ticket booth in there, is that what you said? Did I understand you correctly?
Yeah, if you have anything that deals with New Jersey Transit, selling tickets, whatever, with the booth itself or the sheet, they would have to make sure that they have some type of law enforcement there. We do have police from New Jersey Transit, they're all in Pleasantville City Bus Terminal every day.
We checked into something like that before with New Jersey Transit Security, but I won't get into that now, this is only a comment.
Well, you need to, I know some people talk.
Okay. And that's it. And for all those that were asked, when Mr. Harmon came up and asked about the car wash, that's gonna be a state-of-the-art car wash, it's called My Car Wash. They have them in Camden County and Blackwood County, there's a chain of them. It should be really, really nice. And we'll have one on this, in the town, you know, on the south side. I know we have a couple of car washes on the other side. That's it. Everyone, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just congratulations, I know the two fire personnels have left, but there are still some fire personnel here. And just for the record, from administration, I look forward to working with now Captain Hood, and congratulations on his appointment, and Chief Tricaw. To Jerome Page's, your comment, I thank you about the marketing, we've talked about that in the past. And this year, for 2023, City Council has appointed a marketing firm that will be working with the City of Marketing Consulting, that will be working with the City, and our goal is, is to get the good news out there, you know, as it relates to spurring economic development and talking about all of the positive things that are going on. And our first meeting is scheduled actually tomorrow. So hopefully you'll see something happen in that area. And to your point regarding the Pleasantville Bus Station, we did, under the guidance from you, that the information that you gave us, my office and others have met with others from New Jersey Transit. And at the time, they were having staffing issues and some other issue, internal issues going on within their department, and they were not able to provide any type of security. But we will circle back around and see what that looks like because the more presence of security, the safer our area and community will be. So I've taken notes for most of the things that are considered, I sent in and I forgot who gave me the message regarding the pothole. I think that gentleman is gone as well, but that pothole ticket has been sent in as you spoke, so real time that information went in. And hopefully you'll get some response on that quickly. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I would like to speak to the women on the right side because you have a business that could be a thriving business into the City of Pleasantville. And also, be a revenue for the City of Pleasantville. And I would like to see you up and running tomorrow. Thank you. I hope you get all those things.
Thank you, guys, thank you for your concern. Actually, a very important, they said every second Tuesday of the month, right?
Yes, yes.
Would you mind announcing it? Because a lot of good things come from those meetings, so I'll give you.
Yes, what Councilman's talking about is the community ward meetings. The second Tuesday of every month in the library at five-thirty. The next one is going to be February fourteenth. So everyone and their lovers come out at five-thirty with a community ward meeting.
The reason why I've thrown it off is because a lot comes out of that meeting, that it gets accomplished and it gets results. Some of the complaints that we have here. And it's a different venue, too. We more communicate a little bit more, it's more at ease, and we get time to just hear all of you and move it along to get it taken care of somehow. Please.
And how is that advertised?
Right.
It's on the website.
And you put it on ninety-seven. It's on ninety-seven.
It's on the website?
It's on the website.
What was the time? What was the time?
Five-thirty.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanna let people know that I'm running around Pleasantville, and when I see a commercial vehicle or tractor, I do call police headquarters and let them know that it parked there, so that's what I've been doing lately since I work around Pleasantville and out of Pleasantville. So when I went to Pleasantville and I see a trailer parked or a tractor parked, I let the police department know. So I'm working on that as much as I could because I see a lot of tractors and a lot of trailers parked out there and should be parked in the corners. And plus they block the view, so I'm working on that, letting everybody know. And have a blessed night. Thank, congratulations to the chief and the captain. You guys have a blessed night, stay safe.
Councilman Barclay.
All right, I wanna thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. But I want to inform you that today we convened our first meeting of the recreation section of this city, on my chair, Ms. Chair. And we received very impressive news from Ms. Patriona, who's the director, that our professional boxing gym is fully complete and ready to be utilized. And there will be a grand reopening on the twenty-seventh of January at six P M. And I want to encourage the council here to try to attend because I was excited when I got the news. And I also want to urge you to pay attention from the recreational side because there are a lot of things that we agreed that we'll be doing. We're not gonna review them now, but they will bring the city to light, and they are some of the best way to advertise our city. So I want to thank you again, Pleasantville, for the opportunity to share our quota in developing our own living place. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
How that will be out?
Mr. Davenport? Thank you all for coming out. In concerns to our concerns, we will do the very best we possibly can to handle those and move this city forward. God bless the City of Pleasantville, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
May I speak?
On the face? I said.